Let the record reflect, we've reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the pledge, and after the pledge, please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Rest a moment's silence for Alfred Shalanzio. For those that grew up in Madison, he is someone that literally left his mark on our downtown as the owner of Alfred's Ford Shop, opened in 1960. Al worked there virtually every day through 1978, and then didn't fully retire until 1988, and still at holiday time would come back from his golf in Florida to Madison and wait for me on Christmas Eve for me to finish up my Christmas shopping, and then close the store. So he is a truly a Madison icon, and a good friend to many of us. Let's take a moment to remember Al Shalanzio, and have our thoughts and prayers for his family. Minutes for approval, we have the motion for executive minutes of November 13, 2017.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of November 13, 2017.
Some moved.
Second.
And we have the corrections at our table earlier. Any other, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome all. This is our last meeting of the year. Hard to believe another year has gone by, and a reminder that our reorganization meeting is January 3, Wednesday, at 7:00 PM right here. We'll be recognizing outgoing volunteers, those that have served five years or more on any of our committees, boards, or commissions. Also recognizing Bob Landrigan for his six years of service on his council, and again welcoming John Hoover to the council, and swearing in Carmela Vitale for yet another term. So that's the 3rd, at 7:00 PM. Other things going on, last week, in the same week that we saw the closing of Poor Herbie's, the pub run by the Mullins family, many of Judy Mullins's friends, colleagues, and fans gathered down in the courtroom to recognize Judy's work on behalf of our residents. She truly was dedicated to Madison. As I pointed out, that it's, you know, life is very interesting, and how you might have different angles of viewing things, but dedication to the town, doesn't matter what your label is. While she was a longtime chair of the Republican Party at the same time I was the chair of the Democratic Party, we found ourselves on the ballot at the same time in different columns, but my respect for her is as strong as anyone else's in this town for what she has done and has left her mark. Some of the things that she should be thanked for, and if you've run into Judy and Dennis and Morris Plains, creation of the Shade Tree Authority, which is now the Shade Tree Management Board, friends of the Shade Tree, working with beautification of a train station, and the list goes on and on. They had a banner that went so long, and I see Christine Shore in the audience, thank you so much for pulling that together and having that long list. We almost had to go to the planning board to get a permission for that list and for Judy, because it took up so much space. And another thing that Judy gave to the town was her dedication on the planning board. As I pointed out, that when she left, I was determined to find someone else that had the same love for trees and landscaping, and to make sure her legacy was followed. And not to be forgotten, Dennis, her husband, it was a three-term council member, so it's, Morris Plains now has the Mullins to work and get them on the right track. Don't tell Mayor Drusler I said that, sorry. One other reminder, on December 19, we have a joint meeting of the mayor, council, and planning board, and Historic Preservation Commission, and this is a concept review for the theater. And I want to emphasize the word "concept," there is no formal application in yet. This is a process where a developer can present their concept, and rather than have it go to multiple boards, we are putting them all together, so no decisions will be made at that point. They'll just get feedback, not only from those three respective bodies, but also a chance for the public to share their comments. They then will take all that back and go through a formal application process. So 19th, right now, we're scheduled to be in the courtroom downstairs, but if it looks, we're working on potential options of shifting it if the crowd gets too big. And the employee of the month for December is Helene Corlett of the Senior Center, for her assistance with the director of the Senior Center during a recent senior trip involving a senior with an emergency. She really stepped in and helped out as they were in a museum in New York City, and someone had a little incident, and she truly made a difference. So we are honoring her as the employee of the month for December. And that is all I have for now. Let's all go on to reports, Public Works and Engineering. Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Report from the Engineering Department. The Department is assembling the plans and specifications for 2018 road improvement projects, which include Crestwood, Rosewood, Kensington, Plain, Central, and Greenwood. And those, they anticipate that the advertisements will be going out in February, and the awards in May, which means that we could start up very quickly in the spring. The general contractor has attended a pre-construction meeting for the Central Avenue water main replacement, and anticipates starting the project by saw cutting the road this month. It was confirmed that if the weather cooperated, the project will be completed by March 2018. DPW completed foundation construction for the Memorial Park rink support building. The prefabricated storage building has been scheduled for delivery and installation by Pleasant Run Structures in the next month, weather permitting, and that's taken place at that old shed that's been there for at least 100 years, I think, and it's going to be very nice. Department of Public Works have been very busy, you know, they've done, I think, one of the best jobs that I can remember on picking up leaves. I know leaves have been picked up on my street at least four times already, and Maureen spoke about leaves being picked up today with the snow on top of them, so they're doing a great job with that. Also, talked to the director, because the leaves did not fall as quickly as they do other years, he's just going to keep on picking them up whenever they see them, so don't be concerned if your landscaper is putting them in the road, we'll get them done. The Mechanics Department, you know, is always busy, and they got all the snow equipment ready for the two inches that we got this the other day. They also have to service snow blowers for the Fire Department. Like I said, the Parks Department, the Roads Department, and the Sewer Department have actually been working on the leaf pickup. There was a setup for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony that they took care of. Also, they've been working on the shed down at Rosedale, which is going to be very nice. Do you remember the name of, is it Amish company that's bringing that shed in, Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
So it's going to be very, it's going to be very nice. May even have a bathroom in it, which would be really great. So anyway, the other night, we had our first, we had another joint municipal court meeting, and the 2018 budget was introduced, and we got acknowledgement of correspondence for the final version of the agreement in the operation of the Joint Municipal Court between Madison Borough and Borough of Chatham, Chatham Township, Harding Township, and Morris Township. As I said to them the other night at the meeting, I think it's probably one of the most successful shared services that we have, and it's working out very well. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. We are beginning the budget process for 2018, and the hearing will be set in the coming weeks. And once finalized, it's going to be posted on RoseNet and Facebook, and reported at upcoming council meetings. Tonight, however, is the third meeting regarding the 2018 budget. On November 13, the council received a report and discussed the findings regarding the year-to-date financial performance of the electric utility. On November 27, the administration discussed with council the process and purpose of closing out completed capital ordinances. And we then voted on Resolution 304, 2017, which canceled certain capital ordinances, thus freeing up over $260,000 in funds that may be used for future capital projects. Tonight, our borough engineer, Bob Vogel, will be presenting his initial draft of the five-year capital plan. The goal is to detail the capital needs for 2018, and then the engineering and administration hope to advance spending ordinances in January for road reconstruction, as well as sidewalk, parking lot, and road repairs in early January. So the expectation is to bundle these projects together and get the bids out on the street over the winter. This has been passed, done the past two years, and resulted in excellent pricing and timely completion of the projects. Remainder of the capital budget will be discussed in detail at a council meeting in January. From the Chief Financial Officer, the Tax Collector's Office has done an excellent job this year. With just a few weeks to go, the current tax collection rate for 2017 is 98.8%. Our goal is to get over 99%. From the Tax Assessor, the end of the year is an important time regarding outstanding tax appeals, and the administration has been working the Tax Assessor on large outstanding appeals. Meetings have occurred or been scheduled, those representing the largest tax appeals, with the hope of settling the cases before the end of the year. All property owners are reminded that they have the annual right to appeal their property taxes, and the filing deadline is April 1. And from the Utility Billing Department, over the past few months, the Chief Financial Officer and the utility billing staff have been working with the billing software company to reformat the water and electric bills. They hope to test the bill form next week, and if all goes well, residents will start seeing the new bill sometime in January. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Awkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll begin with the Electric Department. A couple of the things that I'll mention are continuations of some of reports I've made in the past, one of which is the continuing installation of meters at the KRE project. In addition, the department's been busy with the general markouts, new services, and streetlight repairs. Also, we've talked about King's Road and the lighting that's going on between Prospect and Maple. The department continues pulling wire and installing post lights, and I'm happy to say we expect the lights will be on this week. So that project is just about done. And then I have a little longer story to tell, but it's worth hearing. On Thursday, December 7, the standby crew was called out at 6:00 AM for a report of half-power at 30 Loantica Way, Apartment E. They found that the underground primary was blown in the manhole, which provided electric to the entire development. The damage required immediate repair. The entire electric department crew worked all day removing damaged cable and replacing the 200 feet of new cable with six new terminations at each end of the cable, and returned services to the residents at 3:00 PM. I don't think many towns could tell a similar story, so congratulations, that was a job very well done. From the Water Department, we continue to install meters that we've talked about that can be read remotely. That'll be ongoing, obviously, for quite some time. I've also mentioned in the past the hydrant flushing program. It's about 95% complete, just in case you're of the 5% that hasn't had it done yet, I will remind you that if your water seems strange, it's off a little or whatever, look out the window before you make a call. Maybe your street is having this flushing program. Madison has three major water interconnections with New Jersey American Water. These connections between the two water companies are for emergency use only, therefore they are checked for reliability each year. We just did it, and they all passed the inspection, so that's nice to know. The fire extinguishers the department relies on for protection of the treatment in wellhouse buildings were also checked, another successful exercise. The Water Department would like to remind you that obviously with colder temperatures coming, we hope, and if you haven't, please do, shut off your outside water. Faucets, sprinklers, irrigation systems, you don't want busted pipes. Take it from someone who's been there. And then finally, I'd like to mention that the Department, in cooperation with DPW, excavated, formed, and poured the concrete foundation, and installed utilities through the foundation for the new hut at the skating rink. That'll be a very nice addition. First step is done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three things. First, flu shots are still available at the Health Department. Please call for an appointment, 973-593-3079. Also, the Madison Health Department's annual free rabies clinic was held this past Saturday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Almost 140 pets were inoculated in spite of the threatening weather. A big thank you to the DPW staff for their assistance in planning and implementing the clinic. And surveys were also done at the clinic for participant feedback on the new location and clinic convenience. And finally, the comprehensive metabolic profile, CMP blood testing, is being offered this Wednesday, December 13, at the Madison Health Department. To make an appointment, please call the Health Department, same number, 973-593-3079, before 4:30 PM Tuesday, that's tomorrow. This testing will include cholesterol, glucose, and a complete blood count. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Community Affairs and Public Safety, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, on Monday, November 20, at approximately 5:00 in the morning, Madison Dispatch received a call from a motorist reporting a house on fire on Pomeroy Road near Dogwood. Arriving units found 59 Pomeroy Road on fire with flames visible through the roof of the structure. Given the heavy volume of fire, a second alarm was called, which brought in additional engine companies from Florham Park, Morris Township, Whippany, and a ladder company from Chatham. The ambulance squad, Morris County EMS, and Morris County Fire Coordinator also responded to the scene. Madison Police responded and secured the area. In all, approximately 40 firefighters responded to the fire. Fortunately, the house was not inhabited, and there were no injuries. The cause of the fire is not suspicious and is being investigated by the Madison Fire Department. And then on Monday, November 27, at approximately 1:00, Madison Fire Department, along with many other Morris County Fire Departments and agencies, were dispatched to assist the Whippany Fire Department at the scene of a commercial structure fire at one of Morris County's longtime restaurant's, Billy's Red Room. The restaurant sustained heavy fire damage, really heavy fire damage. Madison Tower One and Chief DeRosa responded and were assigned to the rear of the building to flow water onto the fire. Madison was released and back in quarters by 6:30 PM. On Monday, December 4, at approximately 8:00 in the morning, the Fire Department responded to the Madison Junior School for a small fire in a boys' bathroom. The building's automatic fire alarm system activated, and all students and faculty exited the building quickly and safely. The fire is being investigated by the Morris County Prosecutor's Office. There were no injuries. Congratulations go out to the following. Volunteer firefighter Matt Wexler upon completion of firefighter 1. Volunteer firefighter Brian Castano upon completion of firefighter 2. And volunteer firefighter Evan Webb and Lieutenant Kyle Wickham upon their completion of the New Jersey Division of Fire Safety's Fire Inspector class. And finally, as a reminder, if you use a live Christmas tree in your home, please keep it properly watered during the holiday season. And from the Downtown Development Commission, the Chamber of Commerce is inviting children and adults to participate in the month-long scavenger hunt to find Rosie, the Rose City Reindeer. You can look for Rosie in any one of over 30 participating businesses, and, oh, I'm sorry, this is a free event, open to the public and for children only.
Oh.
I'm sorry. You can pick a participation card at any one of the businesses involved in the Find Rosie, the Rose City Reindeer Scavenger Hunt. If you collect 15 stamps, your name will be tossed into a lottery for a Madison Chamber of Commerce gift certificate. And if you're really into gambling, you can watch the live feed of the grand prize drawing on the I Love Madison, New Jersey Facebook page on Monday, December 18, at 4:00 PM. And then the second thing is the Madison Area Chamber of Commerce has designed and created its third annual limited edition ornament, which is a jade crystal beveled with an image of Hartley Dunn's memorial building. Includes a silver hanging cord, makes it suitable for tree or window display. Also included is a two-piece gift box, which permits purchasers of the ornament to safely ship it to friends and family who won't be in town this holiday season. Now I know what I'm getting for Ryan in Montreal. The ornament is available for $20 and can be purchased at the Madison Pharmacy or Stuart Morris Awards. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
Okay, now we're on the first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to agenda items, our agenda discussions, which include joint meeting sewer capacity study, Main Street light fixture improvements, and introduction of our draft five-year capital plan, and 2018 budget for road reconstruction, milling and overlay. Or you may comment on any of the resolutions. I'm going to go through them very quickly, so not only do you have an understanding what's in the consent agenda, but you can understand what you might want to comment on. Resolution 309 is related to sale of property on King's Road adjacent to Curry Automotive. 310 is the extension of a retainer with John Scagnelli Esquire as legal counsel municipal pipeline group. 311 is hiring of a hearing officer for disciplinary matters. 312, authorizing chief of financial officer to move premium payments to the general fund. 313, extending the contract with Seal Power LLC for energy audits for our residents. 314, approving a raffle license for the Rotary District 7470 Foundation. 315, resolution awarding electric material bids to various companies in the amounts of $9,200, $13,000, $3100, and $8,400. And then Resolution 316, which is awarding the contract for tree trimming services, honor tree service. 317 is renewal of inter-local services agreement Township and Milburn for animal control services. 318 is authorizing promotion of Colin Dunn and Louis DeRosa IV to position of truck driver 2 in Public Works Department, Parks Department. 319 is authorizing shared service agreement with Berkeley Heights, Chatham Township, Borough of Chatham, I threw an extra town there, Borough of Chatham, Harding Township, Kenilworth, Mountain Lakes, and Summit for IT services. 320 is authorizing grant application to the County of Morris for a community development block grant for Morris Place improvements and reconstruction amount of $80,000. 321 is renewing liquor license for cross-Atlantic vines. 322, resolution authorizing settlement of certain tax appeals. 323 is approving a renewal of livery license. 324 is requesting the Director of Local Government Services to approve insertion of an item of revenue and budget year 2017. So you may comment on any of those agenda items or resolutions, and those will also all, as I read there, will be part of the consent agenda. I know that was a mouthful. Anyone want to comment on one of those? Step to lectern, state your name, your address, and the agenda item that you are addressing.
Hey. My name is Jill Rhodes. I'm at 78 Ridge Dale Avenue. Hopefully, I'm asking a clarification question more than anything. Resolution 317, the animal control services with Milburn, it was my understanding, hopefully mistakenly, that they actually go to a kill shelter, as opposed to working with St. Hubert's, which runs as a no-kill shelter? Because I know people who don't want to call animal services in our town because they're afraid that the cat or the dog isn't going to get euthanized, so can I ask for clarification on whether that is a kill shelter, and if so, why we coordinate with that?
Okay. Any other questions? We'll answer that as you get back to your seat, then.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Jill.
Sign in first.
Yes, sign in. Ray, can you address that?
I can. Historically, the borough had a contractual relationship with St. Hubert's for many, many years, and us along with our neighboring towns. And after St. Hubert's did their renovation, they changed their funding model on how they expected to be paid for their services to a per capita model. So our annual cost previously was approximately $7,000 to $9,000, depending on the activities. When they changed to the new billing model, they changed it to a per capita funding model of $3 per resident. So we have 16,000 residents, so the cost they projected for us was increased from the $7,000 to $48,000 a year. So at that time, the governing body at that time, which was a different governing body, made a decision to withdraw from that relationship, as well as Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Morris Township, Harding, and a number of towns around us took the same action. To my knowledge, and I know there's, one of our council members had experience with St. Hubert's, I believe they may be in the category similar to what Livingston was, and what the shelter that's in this situation that we're recommending to the governing body to approve, that after seven days of holding the animal, the animal is euthanized if the animal's not claimed. Our experience has been, and for those who follow Madison on Facebook, is as we're retrieving animals, the police department tends to end up with custody of those, and before they're turned over to the animal control officer in Milburn, they're advertised on and posted on Facebook, and the overwhelming majority of those animals are claimed, usually the same day, by the original owner, who sees them or is notified by others who have seen the animal being held by a police officer on Facebook. So I don't know if that's a responsive answer, but that's kind of where we are. Our current agreement was with Livingston as the shelter, and that was through Milburn. Livingston terminated a relationship for Milburn and all the contract towns that Milburn provides those services. So we've been directed by the governing body as to start the new year with this process, but to continue to explore alternate facilities to see whether we can find a facility that doesn't practice a euthanasia practice if we entrust animals to them, and that's what we'll pursue. And one of the shelters may be Mount Pleasant or others, but it's very difficult to get placement with shelters, and we did try the county to see whether they'd be interested in regional service, and they passed on that opportunity. So we are struggling, so if you have suggestions, maybe I can see you after the meeting, if you've got some locations, we'll be glad to explore them tomorrow to see if we can find a better placement for the animals that end up there.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on something on the agenda? Seeing that, I close this part of the meeting. We're going to go to number two first, and call Tim Bradley up. This is our joint meeting sewer capacity study. As they're getting set up, just as a reminder, we, along with the Borough of Chatham, we're part of the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting, which is a sewer treatment plant located on North Passaic Avenue. So we collect our sewage here in Madison, it flows all the way to the sewer treatment plant on North Passaic, and we contracted with Kleinfelder, and Tim will introduce himself, to do a sewer capacity study and help give us some good background as we make decisions on future investments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Tim Bradley, I'm with the firm of Kleinfelder, located in Princeton, New Jersey. I'm here to present the capacity assurance update that we recently prepared for the I'm here to present the capacity assurance update that we recently prepared for the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting. And as the first order of business, let me just describe that a capacity assurance report is a document.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
A capacity assurance report is a document required by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to ensure that wastewater treatment plants are providing sufficient capacity for future growth and flows projected for that facility. And, you know, to go over that brief summary of the capacity assurance report, the presentation will first present the objective of the capacity assurance report update. I'll give you a brief description of the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting's existing wastewater treatment facility, which is called the Molitor Water Pollution Control Facility. We'll then talk about the important wastewater characterization update, which was the first step of the process, followed by the capacity evaluation update, which was the second step. I'll also present to you what the future additional flows, as estimated by the Borough of Madison and the Borough of Chatham's planning consultants were for the two towns, and as a result of all of that, what the recommended improvement needs are for the Molitor Water Pollution Control Facility and the corresponding budgetary cost estimates. So first, the objective of the study was simply to update the capacity assurance report that was initially prepared in 2009 as a result of a requirement imposed by the DEP, New Jersey DEP, in 2008. That was quite a few years ago now, using data that was even older than that. The objective of the update was to reassess the capacity assurance report based on current wastewater characteristics and also the updated and more detailed estimate of future flows. The update was done in two specific phases. The first phase was completed about a year ago, and that was the capacity evaluation of the existing Molitor Water Pollution Control Plant. Then, following the planning consultant's work of the two boroughs, which yielded the projected future flows, we proceeded with Phase Two of the update, which was to identify the improvement needs to accommodate the future flow projected for the two boroughs. So just briefly, the Molitor Water Pollution Control Facility, which is one of the first wastewater treatment facilities located in the state of New Jersey, was originally constructed in 1915. As you can well imagine, this facility has been upgraded and expanded multiple times over its 100 years of existence to meet evolving needs and regulations. Can't really see this very well, but let me... Just, this is North Passaic Avenue. For those of you that don't know where the plant is, it's, the entrance is off of North Passaic Avenue, and the plant which we see here is located adjacent and behind the tennis club on North Passaic Avenue. These, these kind of hazy structures that you see are all integral components of the Molitor Water Pollution Control Plant that provide various steps within the treatment process. This used to be in service. This was in an aerated stabilization pond, which has recently been removed from service. Simply, it was not necessary at this point in time. Since we'll be talking about the components of the plant, I thought I would briefly review the flow schematic of the plant so you could understand the basics of the components of the plant and what they do. So the raw wastewater first enters the plant and undergoes screening. The purpose of screening is to remove coarse debris and other material that, if not removed, would clog pumps and piping and various elements of the wastewater treatment process downstream. The second step is grit removal. Grid is a coarse abrasive material that, if not removed, will wear out pumps and piping, again, downstream items of the treatment process. Collectively, these two steps are called preliminary treatment, the preliminary treatment of wastewater. Following preliminary treatment, the wastewater then moves on to primary treatment. Primary treatment consists of primary settling tanks. This provides acquiescent location for solids contained in the wastewater to settle. Those settled solids are removed as sludge, which we'll talk about later. The primary treated wastewater then undergoes biological treatment. At the Molitor Water Pollution Control Facility, there are two separate biological treatment processes. Flow is divided in this location between the two processes. This is the original biological treatment process constructed in the 1960s. This newer version was part of a plant expansion that occurred in the early 1990s, using a slightly different but very similar, basically the same biological treatment process, consists of aeration tanks, followed by final clarifiers and a bunch of other equipment that you don't see in a simple schematic like this. The biological treated effluent, this now is a highly treated, 90% removal of the key contaminants, plus or minus, then moves on to the chlorine contact tank where disinfection occurs. That's where sodium hypochlorite, which is essentially bleach, is introduced to disinfect, remove bacteria, not removed in the process here. And after, following that introduction of sodium hypochlorite for disinfection, a second chemical, sodium bisulfate, is added to remove any residual wastewater, excuse me, any residual chlorine prior to discharge to the Passaic River. As with the primary treatment process, this process produces sludge. This sludge is more dilute than that sludge, and so it must undergo thickening prior to anaerobic digestion. Anaerobic digestion is another biological treatment process. The purpose of this project is to convert organic material to methane gas. That methane gas is then beneficially reused to drive engines that, for example, produce the oxygen that is needed for this process. It also provides heat that's needed to maintain this process. It destroys a significant mass of the solids that would otherwise have to be hauled away as sludge for disposal. Primary sludge removed in a primary process does not need to be first thickened before it's digested. Following digestion, the digested sludge goes through a sludge de-watering step called a belt filter press that, that converts a very, relatively dilute 2% solids sludge to over 20% solids, and thus reduces the cost for transportation disposal of the sludge material. So that's a quick overview of the treatment process. Moving on. So the first step in the, in the update was to, to update the influent wastewater characteristics. And looking at the characteristics, the key parameters that are looked at in this type of exercise are both the parameter of flow, which is obvious, as well as these various strength parameters. These three parameters indicate the, the strength of the wastewater. BOD is biochemical oxygen demand. That's a measure of the organic strength of the wastewater. Total suspended solids, just what it says, it's a measure of the suspended solids in the wastewater. NH3N is ammonia nitrogen, a measure of the ammonia content of the wastewater. Wastewater does not enter the plant on a steady, continuous basis. It varies on a monthly, weekly, daily, and hourly basis. It's important to characterize each of these parameters based on that variability because the treatment process needs to function under each of those conditions, not just on an annual average basis, but to be able to handle the peaks and, that occur during the course of the year. These important ones, and I won't go through each of these, but for example, we have the annual average condition. Here is the maximum monthly, that's the 30-day average maximum condition during the course of the year. We then characterize the peaking factor related to that. This means that the maximum monthly sustained flow is 1.18 times greater than the annual average of 2.5, 3.05 mg/d, and so on and so on. I won't go through each of those, but we've had to characterize each of these conditions to properly evaluate the capacity of the plant. So this is the current wastewater characteristics based on a detailed assessment of data from the period 2011 through the middle of 2016. We use that data to then evaluate the capacity of each individual component of the Molitor Water Pollution Control Facility that we just looked at on that flow schematic. Each of those individual components was evaluated in detail, and this is the result of that evaluation based on the wastewater characteristics. If we go through the process, the keep plant components are listed here, and this is the resulting capacity, annual average capacity. We've normalized the capacity here to the annual average capacity, just to keep everything on a consistent basis. So what you can see, the, the capacity of each component varies. It ranges from a low of 2.58 mg/d to as high as about 3.5 mg/d. I footnoted a couple of key plant components here. The capacity of these two components will be downgraded in the year 2020, when the plant needs to begin removing phosphorus to a much higher degree, and to do that, they need to add a chemical. That chemical, which precipitates the phosphorus, is much more difficult to settle. It's a lighter material, and as a result, you need to derate the capacity of the clarifiers so that they can properly remove the phosphorus at that time. And so this established at the end of that first phase of the assessment, the existing capacity of the Molitor Water Pollution Control Facility. The next step, Phase Two, after the planning consultants did their work, was to establish the future flows. So the two boroughs, planning consultant was the same consultant, developed these 10-year projections of additional flow. This wasn't after the next 50 years. This was a pretty near-term, 10-year build-out projection. For the Borough of Chatham, the consultant estimated 234,000 additional gallons per day of flow. Madison's same consultant estimated 461,000 for the, or additional future flow from Madison Borough, totaling about 700,000 gallons per day. That does not include what's committed flow. Committed flow is flow from previously approved development that has not yet been constructed, so the flow does not yet exist. So the most significant of those is 443,600 gallons per day of committed flow from Geraldo Farms. So if you add the projected future additional flow plus this committed flow, which will occur in the future, it's about .74 mg/d, 740,000 gallons per day of future annual average flow capacity. So what we then did, .74, that's again the sum of this plus this, added that to what we saw on that previous slide, the current annual average flow capacity, annual average flow is 2.58 mg/d. The .74 plus 2.58 is 3.32 mg/d. We then use the same peaking factors to predict what the variability in future flow will be. Same, same basic approach. So these then became our estimated future influent wastewater characteristics, which we then compared to the capacity of the individual components of the Molitor Water Pollution Control Facility. And based on that, we identified where the capacity deficits were and what improvements needed to be made. I'm going to go over those improvements with you just briefly. There were five recommended capital improvements. The first of those was replace the influence screen. And for each of these, again, just, because this is a lot to absorb in one quick presentation, I'll review the, what the purpose of that step of the treatment process is, what the budgetary capital cost estimate was, and what we're, what we're achieving through the recommended improvement. In this case, we need to re, the influence screen, as I mentioned before, removes debris, other coarse material from the wastewater that, if not removed, would present downstream problems in the plant related to blockages and clogging, et cetera. Budgetary capital cost estimate for this improvement is $428,000, and it's needed to address a future flow capacity deficit for that step in the treatment process, and just as importantly, to replace this 25-year-old piece of equipment that, that is reaching the end of its useful service life. Even without this capacity deficit, that screen will need to be replaced in not-too-distant future. So there's, there's not only the need for a capacity improvement, but to deal with an aging infrastructure issue as well. This next recommendation, one of the two biological treatment processes was called the oxidation channels on that flow schematic. This next recommendation is not to replace the tanks and all the other stuff, but just to replace the oxidation channel aerators. The aerators provide the oxygen needed for the biological treatment of wastewater. We need additional oxygen as part of the expansion. Budgetary capital cost, $916,000. This is needed to address the future flow deficits for both the oxidation channel itself as well as for the primary clarifiers. We found this to be a lower-cost way to deal with the primary clarifier capacity deficit, rather than construct additional primary clarifiers at great cost. We simply allowed the primary clarifiers to operate a little less efficiently at the additional flow, have that additional BOD and total suspended solids enter the oxidation channel, then removed there. That was a lower-cost way to go. The next improvement was not to upgrade an existing process, but rather to construct a new process, effluent filters. This is a common fact, most plants in New Jersey that have the same effluent limits that the Molitor Water Pollution Control Facility has already have effluent filters. The Joint Meeting has done a great job in achieving reliable compliance without this, you know, common step in a treatment process. Its purpose is to provide enhanced removal of total suspended solids following biological treatment. Budgetary capital cost is about $3 million. It's needed for numerous reasons. First, to reduce that capacity deficit with the final clarifiers, particularly following the derating of that capacity, following the, the need to remove additional phosphorus through the introduction of a chemical to remove phosphorus. And very relevant to that is the, these filters were, will allow a reduction in the amount of chemical used and then reduce the chemical cost for total phosphorus removal. In addition to that, it simply enhances the reliability of permit compliance, which is why most other plants in the state already have this, these, these filters, types of filters. Fourth is to replace, this is a relatively modest improvement, to replace some chemical feed pumps related to disinfection process, both types of chemicals that I mentioned before, sodium hypochlorite for disinfection and sodium bisulfate for disinfection, for dechlorination. They both need to be replaced at a relatively modest cost of $68,000. It's needed to address capacity deficiencies for those chemical feed systems. And then last, but not least, that last step in the sludge processing train that I mentioned, the sludge de-watering by belt filter press, there's only one of those, and what we need to do to address the capacity is to install a second belt filter press. Again, the purpose of this component of the treatment process is to de-water, remove all this water from the sludge, and if you didn't remove, you'd be taking it around for disposal at great cost. So it's an important step of the process. You need the second one to provide sufficient capacity, $950,000. In addition to addressing the capacity deficit, it will preclude the need to hire additional staff or provide significant overtime if they tried to make a go of it with just running the one, that one existing belt filter press for many more hours per week than it, than it currently is. But equally important, this is the one, there's, there's no treatment plant where you find one of anything. There's always a backup for, for resiliency purposes. This plant has survived all these years with only one belt filter press. The second one will also provide some added level of, of resiliency, which is, which is highly desirable in addition to providing the capacity that's needed. If we summarize, sum all this stuff up, it's about $5.8 million of improvements. These types of projects aren't implemented overnight. It takes a fairly significant period of time, all, all told about 30 months when you consider design and permitting and advertisement for bids and construction, et cetera. 30 months. That, if it were to start somewhere in January, just to put things in perspective, it would be July of 2020 until these improvements were up and running. It's also important to recognize that low interest financing is available through the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Financing Program, which is the program... New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Financing Program, which is the program that virtually all public entities face with a project of this size, used to finance these types of improvements. And so that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to address any.
We'll take questions from the council. Since Tim will be leaving after the presentation, I will allow the public to ask questions kind of out of order. But first, from the council, one quick question, Tim, because I don't remember the number off the top of my head. If we were to address the phosphorus just by chemical, what is the added cost on annual basis?
It's over $300,000 a year. That's the current chemical cost in 2020. It's likely to be substantially more. Chemical costs are not going down, but at least $300,000 a year. This will reduce the chemical cost by at least a third.
Thank you. Other questions? Pat?
Well, just one other thing to note, the number you're seeing up there, $575,000 or so, I'm sorry, $5.7 million, rather, is going to be shared between Madison and Chatham Borough. Based on the flows right now, it's about a 65-35 or so split between us and Chatham.
Correct. I did not mention that. But yeah, that's, that's an important point.
People watching.
Not all of Madison's.
Just mostly.
Yep. And again, as you mentioned, that some of those numbers, even if we didn't add a single fixture in either town, a lot of this investment would have to be done anyway.
That's correct. That's correct.
Any other?
I just want to make a comment, especially to everybody that's here, is that this has been a big concern for this particular council. And we've been talking about this probably a year now. And we've reached the point that we've come, that we have to make a very good decision that's coming up. So just so everybody understands these things, we don't take it very lightly. We make sure that we have all the information that we need. This is, it's a difficult subject to listen to, but we do on a monthly basis. And we try and understand. Tim has been great about making us understand, you know, actually, and getting to that bottom line. So it's an important thing that we're doing.
We did try to identify the lowest cost options. I made this brief as possible, but there are some improvements that could have been recommended that we did not recommend. So anyways, it's, this is, a significant effort was made to make this cost as low as possible while still meeting the, the needs and the reliability of permit compliance that this plant is, like all others, must, must achieve.
Maureen?
Yeah, and I just wanted to reiterate, this is, this is one utility we don't want to get wrong. Because, because if we, if we don't do this right, there are going to be serious repercussions.
Fines and penalties, that's what it's all about. You know, DEP doesn't cut very many breaks if there's fines, and they can be very significant.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I know this is a lot of, lot of information at the end of semester, and this will be on the final exam. So if there's any questions from the audience, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and ask your question. Anyone wishing to ask questions? Yes?
Melissa Elias, 40, Green Village Road. Having worked for a town that did not take, that did not take very good care of this issue, I would echo everything that everybody's saying. I've lived in this town since 1982, and thank you all for paying as much attention to this issue as you do. Just a couple of quick questions. One, what is the staffing for the sewage facility?
Put into the microphone.
I can take it. I'm not sure if anyone here knows. I don't know the exact.
We have, we have an executive director, an administrative secretary, and six employees in the field who handle the processes. So a total of eight.
This plant is not staffed 24 hours a day. They operate just barring the day. Larger plants operate staffed 24 hours a day.
And just one other question, in terms of the financing for the implementation of the upgrades, shall we say, is that, is the sewage utility a separate financial entity or is it?
So each, each town actually does its own bonding, but through the mechanism that through the, that the state would make available. But yeah, the joint meeting does not do barring per se as a unit.
So based on the percentage flows, Madison would do its piece?
Right. Yes.
Chatham would do its piece. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
But didn't we also agree that since Madison was going to be providing the lion's share of the financing, that the added capacity would?
We have, that has not.
We have?
No. Thought we did.
Yep. Now, that's to be determined, but the others, not to, the question is, if each town, let's say it's, as Pat pointed out, 65-35, if each town pays, the shares based on that, do you allocate the future capacity at that same, same level? And that's all to be, all to be worked out. Most, most of the investments in the past were just really to maintain the facility. It was more straightforward. And now we're maintaining the facility and also building future capacity. So we get, that will be another, another step. Anyone, any other questions from the audience? I will, this will be posted online, the report there tomorrow at Rosnet, for those that want to look at it again. And maybe possibly with the video, maybe we can do it just a single, so you don't have the, the possibility of just doing this report in addition to the full meeting that we always do. Thank you very much for the report. That was very helpful, and every time I learn more.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Main Street light fixture improvements. Jimmy? So for those that haven't met Jimmy Matina yet, he is our acting superintendent of the electric department and has kept things flowing, not in the sewer way, but in the circuits way. So Jimmy, thank you for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts on the lights.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I only want to upgrade some LED lights. Right now, I'd like to get like 96 lights upgraded. We did 17 of them down in Main Street in front of Burger King. Two years ago, we had a hit-and-run, a little boy got hit by a car. And we decided to put lights from Brook Lake Road to Seaman Street, and we put LEDs up, and they looked great. And now we've been putting them on, on all the intersections. So I'm saying, why mess around? Let's do all of it. Let's do all Main Street, all Madison Avenue, all Park Avenue up to Danford Road. And it comes out to be like 96 lights.
And the dollar figure for that?
It's like 30,000.
Austria and then Ben and Pat? Go ahead.
Can you use the existing light posts?
Yes. We're just changing the heads.
Just changing the heads. Okay. Thank you.
Ben and then Pat?
Yes. I know that LEDs are less expensive to run than typical old-style lights. Do we have any idea how long they'll be in service before we break even?
Well, not really. Right now, we had them lights up there for over two years, and we haven't been back there once touching them. Every other week, I'm up on Madison Avenue, all over town fixing the other lights.
Yeah.
High-pressure sodiums. Just for public safety alone.
Yeah. Thank you.
Pat?
Well, actually, in terms of payback, what's the difference in terms of electricity consumption between the current lights and the LEDs, do we know?
I really don't have that information.
Okay.
Sorry.
But the savings we see are a combination of less power and also less maintenance that we're not, not having, and that's both.
Yes.
Yep. Any other questions? About 60 to 70% savings is what we just heard from the, our CFO, who's in charge of numbers. And so we would, the plan would be to work this into the 2018 capital budget?
Yes, Mayor. This would be brought to the governing body at the first regular meeting in January with an appropriation ordinance out of the Electric Utility Capital Fund, so that Jim can get moving on this and roll it out into the 96 light posts as soon as possible.
All right. So we've got incentives to move forward. Thank you very much.
Somebody was asking a question about putting LED lights out front here on these new post lights. I could look into it, and if, if it could be done, we could do one first and see how it looks, see what kind of difference it makes before we do all of them.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we're on to introduction of draft five-year capital budget.
Good evening, everyone. Bob Vogel. We have distributed in your packets for this evening the draft five-year capital plan, which is a document of about 14 pages. It's grown to 14 pages. It's gone through about a half a dozen revisions by staff over the past three or four months since August. And basically is a culmination of a number of department heads' requests and balancing that with the overall budgetary demands of the borough. And I believe we were going to continue this discussion on the five-year capital plan into the budget schedule in 2018. We're here tonight basically to talk about two pages out of the 14, which is the road improvement program. And the reason for that, as Austria correctly stated previously, was that our bid schedules are accelerated. We really want to get all our road improvement work done over the summer or before. And we generally get favorable pricing by doing that and getting the bids out on the street as early as possible during 2018. So that being said, we have a little presentation screen here, which is a snippet of the five-year capital packets that you have. And let's see on the first sheet here, Jim, do I? Works just fine.
Well, I hope Tim didn't take the remote.
Oh, here we go. So on the first page, you can see the 2018 projects for road reconstruction are being highlighted. The Greenwood Avenue project is number one, and we received $245,000 of state funding from NJDOT for that project, based on an application that we did last fall. So the state had turned around and given us a thumbs up on the funding, shared funding for that project early in the spring. And that would essentially have the effect towards the end of the year of reducing that $640,000 capital cost, which we're required to upfront since DOT costs a reimbursement funding. So that $640,000 number would actually be corrected downward to 245,000 at the end of the year, presuming we get all the funding we sought originally. And we've got a fairly good record of recapping that funding through DOT after it's been granted. The second project on the list is Plain Street. And Frank Russo was instrumental in our, on our staff in going after the funding in January from the Morris County Housing Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant source. And he obtains $80,000 in funding from that source, and we are allowed to bid that project this spring. They have a little bit wider timeframe in order for, they allow a larger timeframe in getting those projects accomplished than the DOT does. DOT is limiting it to 18 months. But all that being said, the project is on the drafting tables. Frank's got that in an advanced state of completion, and we should definitely fund that, given the outside funding that we have already in place. By the way, all these reconstruction projects will have plans and specifications ready to go by the end of the year. We will be able to have a informal public hearing on those, which we normally do January, February, to get the public's input and reaction and on these projects. Again, the plans are reasonably detailed and they'll be bid-ready so that we can turn around and advertise those bids in February as soon as the funding becomes available. Third and fourth projects are Rosewood and Crestwood. These are up off of Park Avenue. Some of the road conditions we can thank public service for. I think public service has been up there doing work for a couple of years. The road conditions overall are degraded. Curbing is in very, very poor shape and has to be completely replaced for those two projects. So the plans and specs for those are included on our list. The next to last is Kensington Road. Kensington is off of Kings Road. It's a fairly large loop road and very close to Kings Road School. Again, there's a fair amount of drainage improvement that is required on that road. The entire road only has four catch basins at each, at each connection to Kings Road and really needs to have that catch basin network brought up through this subdivision. And so I'm sure the residents would be very happy to see those improvements done in the coming year. Last item on our 2018 list is the Central Avenue sidewalks, which we've obviously talked about publicly and behind the scenes for more than a year now. That's another project that Frank has on his drawing board. I believe we can get it done, the sidewalks, for a very reasonable price, less than a quarter million dollars. It's a very long stretch that requires sidewalks, and where we are getting Morris County to participate in the road repaving since it is a county road.
And that's, it's from Fairview to Ridgedale and looking at just one side. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. As far as the sidewalk proposal is concerned, we're now looking at one side where initially we were looking at two.
Pat?
So a couple of questions first on Central. Can you remind us what the schedule is? We're going to be doing first the water main work, I guess, over the winter. And then when do we expect to do the road reconstruction with the county, or the road repaving, rather?
The county, the county has been working, for a couple of years, has been working with us in terms of scheduling. They've been very flexible. They bid their projects as though they have the entire summer and into the fall to get them, get them done. So they don't have specific priorities on specific roads. They seem to be able to shuffle around the priorities easily. And so I would say that the best way to work with our schedule in terms of getting the sidewalks done, April, May, June, and the water main done up till April, so that basically all the utility and sidewalk improvements are complete, would be sometime July, August.
Okay. So we're still expecting to hopefully get it done this summer, and we'll press upon them how many of our major schools are along that route?
That, that would be absolutely helpful, seeing that the schools get very busy in, in October. Yes.
And then the second question is, I went back and looked, I see that we've juggled some of the roads around. I know we kind of do that every year. Did we do another assessment this past summer of the current state of the roads that forced us to move some up and some back?
We did an update of the asphalt condition survey that we did, which is part of the pavement management program. That was done in 2016. So yes, we have done an update of that. A couple of the roads were knocked off the list, Pat, because water mains had to be installed, so Vinyl and Ross were two of those. We normally had them on the project, on the proposal for this year, but they've been sent over to the water capital account.
Yeah.
And we'll be looking at capital for those projects, and then we'll get them done the following year.
And last question, do we get to a point where we don't have to keep doing major road reconstruction, where we've got all the curbing done, where we've got the storm sewers upgraded, and we pretty much just have to concentrate on repaving periodically as roads get chewed up through natural use or, and/or PSCNG?
That would be great. Obviously, the mill and overlay program this past year was done very affordably for us. I think there, it's very likely the overall reconstruction costs will continue to go down. However, the curbing and concrete obviously have a useful life of about 50 years, whereas the asphalt is 15 to 20. And so I think for, potentially for the next 10 or 20 years, you'll see reconstruction costs go down, and then the following 20 probably start going back up again.
Okay. Thank you.
And just one comment on Central Avenue and the county. I did, at a county planning meeting last week, I tried to impress upon them how most towns are now thinking of complete streets, and that means looking at not just cars, but pedestrians and bicyclists. and bicyclists. And in the year 2017, it would be great if the county also looked at complete streets and, which would include sidewalks, not only the Central Avenue section, but one of the most dangerous ones for pedestrians is the Green Village Road as you approach Chatham Township and the Shoprite and so on. So, I don't know if I made a difference, but it's, we would, we would love to see the county think complete streets, just as we do.
Absolutely agreed, and we've made those comments to them in writing before, Mayor.
Yep.
So, it'd be great to see them pick up on specific sections like the one you just mentioned, where sidewalks would be, and a shoulder, obviously, that you could put a bicycle on would be extremely helpful. Drainage improvements would have to be part of that, since there's large wells on both sides of that road at this stage of the game as well. I believe we actually put in a full cost estimate together for them at one point several years ago, but they weren't interested in that one. Not surprising. So, just to recap, the entire reconstruction program totals, including preliminary expenses for surveys for the 2019 roads and an allocation of four third-party inspection services, which I believe Frank is doing in-house for the summer, brings you a total of $1.8 million, which, again, is corrected by both $245,000 from state DOT and $80,000 from the community.
Ben?
Now, I would just like to clarify one point that, that Pat brought up a couple of minutes ago, and that is, so we get to a point where we basically have made up for the time where we weren't doing the work we should have been doing, right? Which is to say the roads-
Talking about the reconstruction work?
Yes. So, we have the reconstruction work. How many more years of that do you think we'll have before we kick into the period where basically we're into more of a maintenance mode?
Well, I thi, I think, again, it all has to do with useful lifespans. So, improvements that we normally do with a reconstruction project have a fifty-year useful lifespan, which means you don't have to redo them in fifty years. The just mill and overlay program have a useful life, used to be twenty, now with the new asphalt, it's generally fifteen-year lifespan, and we're, we're redoing a lot of roads on a fifteen-year rotating basis. And so, again, with the mill and overlay program being significantly less expensive, I believe we've done a lot of reconstruction work over the last ten to twenty years, which you won't have to do again for a fifty-year period. And so, again, should drop off our reconstruction costs over the next ten to twenty years?
But you're-
But it won't go away forever.
Okay, but what, no, I understand that. But what I'm trying to get a handle on is, at some point, you're not really doing road reconstruction, right? You're doing more road maintenance.
More resurfacing projects.
Yes. So, at what point can we expect to get there? Is that five years from now or six years?
Clear the table for reconstruction?
Yes.
That's a very good question, if we ever get there. It always seems as though there's gonna be, there's gonna be a road somewhere there.
Or, or maybe another way to look at it is, I think, off the top of my head, I can tick off some of the major roads that we've done in the recent past. Prospect, Green Avenue, Ridgedale, Kings Road, Rose, I think, Rose, and Greenwood coming up. So, so I think that is a big accomplishment, taking, taking care of these collector roads and then shifting back into just more of the smaller ones.
No, in no sense was I suggesting that this wasn't a big accomplishment. What, what I was rather asking and trying to get to is, we, we see these numbers, and they're more or less stable. Appears the upcoming year will be higher than the next few. If they're going to take a dip, they're going to take a dip because we're not doing as much reconstruction, or we're doing reconstruction on much smaller roads.
Right.
So, I, and as Bob has indicated, we could go through a ten- to fifteen-year period where these numbers would be lower, adjusting for inflation, I assume. So, so the, the question is, when does that start? I mean, will we start seeing a significant downtick in these numbers, say, in 2023 or 2024? Or is it something that we might have to wait ten more years for? That was, that, and I know it's impossible to give a precise answer, but just some ballpark would be useful.
Well, it is, because in certain cases, it's a bit subjective, like Winding Way, for example, which is coming up on our mill and overlay program. Frank and I had to have a long conversation about that, because he was all for getting a lot of the curbing removed and replaced. And yet, I look at it and say to myself, this is good for another fifteen years. And so, I think it's a mill and overlay program for this cycle. But again, those will come back in that, and, you know, in twenty years, and, and really need to be done. So, I don't think we're ever going to get rid of the reconstruction program. I just think it may be simpler, and they may be smaller projects.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, just looking at this, it looks like after next year, we really don't have any major roadways. I mean, they're all more community or local neighborhood-type roads that are on this list.
They've been very successful with DOT for the major roads, so their funding has really helped move a lot of those projects forward.
Yeah. Which means the negative going out there is, all those roads are a hundred percent on us, but at least they're smaller projects.
Yeah, but I mean, if you look at it, we're going from $1.8 million this year, possibly down to $800K in 2022, for a significant drop. I mean, the, yeah, the state and whatever are going to cover maybe $300K of that, but we still have a lot of the-
So, the following page of the road improvement program is obviously the mill and overlay resurfacing projects. We have a list there on 2018, which is Barnesdale, Elmer Street, Keep Street, Kings Road, in front of the building here, and down towards the Green Village Road parcel where KRE picks up. And Winding Way is one of those, and the Cookett parking lot will get resurfaced as well. Again, most of these projects were based on the 2016 pavement management plan, which did specific asphalt condition surveys and quantified each one of the town's roads. The list of one hundred eighty local roads were part of that survey.
Maureen and then Pat.
On the Cook Avenue parking lot, are we looking to add parking spaces when we resurface it? Bless you.
There's been some discussion about changing configuration of the lot, particularly down towards the YMCA parcel. We don't have those answers yet. There may be opportunities, just by restriping, of getting maybe a half a dozen additional spots, but for the most part, that project is currently proposed to be a replacement of what exists.
But, but we are, as we reinforce that, is we're looking at the options of the layout. Because the, at the west, at the western end, you have kind of a funky layout there, and if there's a way to redo it, we'll, we'll hopefully maybe find it. Pat?
I was gonna ask the same question. I guess another question is, the lot that is between Cook Avenue and the community house, do we have any opportunity to talk to them about sharing use and possibly changing the grading a little, so it's easier to, and also even putting in some steps between the two?
The mayor and I plan to go and meet with the owners of the YMCA building, old YMCA building, and, and discuss those very issues.
So, yeah, Bob is working on some options that we can then go to the owner and say, you know, maybe you can partner, and it benefit you and benefit the town.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, last item there, at the bottom of your page for mill and overlay, there's a number of additions which are being funded through capital. One is the traffic control, one is son replacement, striping, curb replacement. The concrete sidewalks, downtown pavers are part of that allocation. Crack sealing and a micro, hopefully, we'll get a micro sealing project done in the not-too-distant future, which is a less, and, less intense and more cost-effective type of milling and overlay, resurfacing other pavements. And I think that pretty much wraps it up. The summary for the road improvements are that, obviously, that we're trying to get early summer contracts out. The high priority roads are part of the pavement management plan. Reimbursable funds are being provided for state-assisted and county-assisted projects. The, particularly the mill and overlay program includes roadway maintenance issues such as resurfacing, sealing, signage, and striping. And obviously, the downtown pavers have been something we've been working diligently for the past year, year and a half. And sidewalks throughout town, which we have a specific program for sidewalk replacement. Again, Frank has helped us get there, and would like to get a number of sidewalks done in conjunction with the mill and overlay program. So, progress on a number of, on a number of fronts. The last item that I can talk about is the big picture, looking at the five-year capital picture, which I believe is page, page one of your, of your handouts. You can see the first two items there, road reconstruction and mill and overlay, are the line items we're talking about tonight, as far as the budgeting is concerned. As you go further down in the overall five-year plan, which, again, we'll be revising and talking about more in the spring, you'll see that the engineering and public works subtotals are relatively even and through the five-year program. And one of our goals is to have a nice, consistent stream of project requests and capital demands for that period. The same goes for general capital. And down at the bottom, at the utility capital, you'll all see a fairly robust set of requests from department heads for this general capital and utility capital. Last slide here shows that if you add up the utility in general, we have generally about $6 million, again, offset by whatever grant funding comes in. And that's all I really have for you tonight. If there's any, any further questions, please let me know.
Carmella?
Bob, I just want to ask you a question on, you're milling and overlay, you're doing Elmer Street. What, what part of Elmer Street is that? Is it, is it where the culvert is going to be involved? Because weren't we going to do something with the culvert this year?
Yeah, the culvert plans are done. We're going to bid those. Since we just appropriated the funding, I believe the second reading was last meeting, Carmella?
Uh-huh, yeah.
We're going to advertise that before the end of the year, and we'll have an award, and we'll get the utility work done for Elmer Street.
So, that'll be done before?
Before the summer.
Okay, before you do this?
Correct.
Just wondering about that.
Lot going on, yeah. Busy spring, as usual.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have a quick comment, and that is that if you look at these numbers and compare them to what our strategic planning exercises several years ago came up with, they're very comparable. It's, it's, you know, backwards thanks again to the people who worked on the project.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, Bob. So, we'll be appropriating the money early in the New Year, so we can go out to bid. We're now for ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on first reading in council meeting on Monday, November the 27th, 2017. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading. I ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance forty-eight, 2017, ordinance of the Borough of Madison, authorizing the private sale of certain property owned by the Borough of Madison, not required for public purposes pursuant to NJSA 4A, colon, twelve, dash, thirteen, B.
I open the hearing for ordinance forty-eight. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance forty-eight, dash, 2017. I'll second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
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 I declare ordinance forty-eight, dash, 2017, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance forty-nine, 2017, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $42,000 from the general capital improvement fund to purchase one pickup truck.
I open the hearing for ordinance forty-nine. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance forty-nine, dash, 2017.
I'll second that motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
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 I declare ordinance forty-nine, dash, 2017, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance fifty, 2017, ordinance amending chapter thirty-four of the Code of the Borough of Madison and Child Police Department, establishing promotional procedures for review of the ranking of candidates.
I open the hearing for ordinance fifty. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance fifty, dash, 2017. I'll second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
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 I declare ordinance fifty, dash, 2017, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. All right. We move on to invitation for discussion. This is when you may comment on any topic, and again, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give you a one-minute warning at three and give you a one-minute grace period and stop you at four. Anyone wish to comment, please stop, step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the hearing, and since this is the last meeting of the year, there are no introduction of ordinances. Consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
And I gave a, go ahead, sorry.
Okay. Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions, R three oh nine, dash, 2017, to R three twenty-four, dash, 2017.
Second.
I gave a quick little review of all those earlier. Any that need to be pulled or for discussion? Any roll call, vote, please?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
All right, there is no unfinished business. The approval of vouchers.
Vouchers, the current fund, $248,786.28. General capital fund, $90,148.64. Electric, operating fund, $213,519.7. Electric capital fund, $16,224 even. Order operating fund, $10,596.54. Order capital fund, $150,773.78. The trust, $53,778.40. The total is $783,826.71.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I'm going to hand over the reins to our council president for, to finish the meeting. We'll explain why I'm stepping away, and if I don't see anyone, everyone, have a great holiday.
Okay. From the recommendation of the Chair of the Zoning Board, the following reappointments and requests require council confirmation. Zoning Board of Adjustment, four-year term through December 31st, 2021. Tony DeRosa, regular. Diane Driscoll, regular. Two-year term through December 31st, 2018. Timothy Fitzsimmons, alternate number one.
I'll move them.
Second.
You have a roll call?
Your turn should be nineteen, yes.
I have one question real fast. The second one is a two-year term.
Shouldn't it be a two-year term, nineteen?
Oh, yeah. So, there's a wrong, twenty?
Should be nineteen.
Okay. Do you want me to say that all over for the record?
That's fine.
Okay, you're fine, okay. All right, so.
You do the roll call.
Roll call now.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Yes.
And for the last time this year, I move, we adjourn.
The last time.
The last time.
The last time.
The last time.
So, there's a draw.
I almost never-
The city had a massive-
Exactly.
You know, it was funny. My sister lives in Spain, and one of his other sisters, she's going over to listen